I'm going to call to order the Johnson County Planning Commission meeting for June twenty eight, twenty twenty two. Appears to be a quorum present. We will nevertheless start with a rule call. If you would call the rule, please.
Mark Huggins.
Here.
Chris Iliff.
Here.
George Lund.
Here.
Roger Mason. Randy Hutchins. Jim Nice. Dave Johns.
Here.
Lindsey Grissay. Kelly Rast.
Present.
Mike Levin.
Here.
Randy Downing.
Here.
Terry Atwell.
Here.
That completes the roll call.
All right. There's a quorum present. I will read a statement with regard to our hybrid meeting format that we are currently engaging in. If you are using Zoom, if you're someone who is zooming in on this meeting, you may participate in the meeting using your computer, phone, or other electronic device. Zoom participants. Chat will be disabled once the meeting begins. If you have trouble with Zoom, there is a number you can call nine one three seven one five seventeen hundred. If you'd like to speak during the public comment section of the meeting, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app to notify planning staff of your desire to speak. To activate this function, click raise hand in the webinar controls at the bottom of the screen. By telephone, you may raise your hand by dialing star nine. We will take comments from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. The Zoom moderator will call on individuals who have raised their hand. The chairman may modify these procedures as needed to conduct an orderly and efficient meeting. All speakers will be limited to two minutes unless the chair designates a different time period in order to accommodate all the speakers. When your name is called by the moderator, your microphone will be unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record, followed by your comments. If you share concerns, comments, or points made by others, please refrain from repeating those comments and instead note for the record that you agree with the previous individual's comments. There will be ten seconds remaining warning that will be a sound that will alert you to the fact that your time is up. Board members and presenters, please state your name every time you begin talking and please state into the microphone so the comments may be transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting. We are presenting live and recording the meeting. Thank you. At this point, I would open the meeting to public comments. And again, as stated earlier, the comments will be limited to two minutes. Does not appear that there is any member of the public who is here present who would wish to present. Are there any people on Zoom who have indicated a desire to make comments?
No, there is not.
Well, then we'll move right along. Disclosures of conflicts of interest and ex parte communications by members. This is an opportunity for members of the Planning Commission to publicly state whether they have had ex parte communications with others who have interests in issues that are coming before us. Is there anyone in the board who would wish to make such a disclosure at this time?
Dave Johns, I just had a Lisa Huppi, H U P P E, call me and then text me and I forwarded the text on to Jay, just said she was going to be alert of whenever there was a CUP out in rural Johnson County from the last, the solar panel, solar panel stuff.
Okay. You know, let me take the opportunity here, as just a moment, as chairman to express my appreciation for the flexibility of the planning staff and the county with regard to making hybrid meetings available and possible. This isn't possible everywhere. We were perhaps not as quick as we could have been to get that initiated. But I, I think we've done a good job since we have been doing that. And I think going forward, it is a good way to do business because it allows people who are not capable of coming to Aletha to nevertheless express their opinions to us and give us the benefit of their wisdom. The next item would be the agenda itself. Do I hear anybody that would like to make any additions or deletions from the agenda as has been printed and circulated to the to the board? Hearing none, then it will be accepted as, as, as it is printed in front of us and up on the screen. The next item would be the approval of the minutes of the April twenty six, twenty two, twenty twenty two meeting minutes and the May ten, twenty twenty two special meeting minutes. And is there anyone that wants to make any suggestions for changes, amendments, deletions, or additions to the minutes of either of those two meetings?
This is Keller Rast. On May tenth, there is a mistake on page thirty nine. There needs to be a correction.
What is that, please? Can you specify?
Yep. Is everybody ready? So at the bottom where it says Commissioner Nice, it says, hey, Kelly, can I ask a question? That should be, hey, Terry. That question was directed towards Terry.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. One more other question. I'm remembering something that I'm not finding in the minutes. Is there a recorded version from May tenth that I could get a hold of?
Yes, it is available at the county website.
It is on the website?
It is, yeah. I had the opportunity to listen to the entire meeting. And it's long, but it's there.
That's right. I know where I'm going. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other suggestions for changes to the minutes of the last two meetings? If not, do I hear a motion for approval of the minutes as amended by the recommendation of Ms. Rast?
George Lund, I approve.
Okay, and the second? All right, it's been moved and seconded for the approval of the meetings as amended. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. No opposition, they will be approved then as amended. The next item on the agenda is the election of officers in accordance with our bylaws. We are using the month of June, our meeting in the month of June to make an election of for a chair and vice chair. I'm going to turn this over now to Mr. Leipzig for explanation of the process and and opening up for nominations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. Jay Leipzig, planning director. In accordance with our bylaws, which were recommended for approval by this body and then sent up to the Board of County Commissioners for approval in accordance with section five point oh one. In June, we are to have our election of officers. And so as you mentioned at our previous meeting, we'll be doing the elections this evening for our chair and our vice chair. And just as a quick review of that, section five oh one, it's a, it's a one-year term. And the, obviously, the chairman would lead the meeting. If that person is not available, the vice chairman would lead the, the meeting. If they're both simultaneously, the longest-serving member present shall serve as acting chairman unless another individual is chosen as acting chairperson for the meeting by a vote of the majority of those present. So that's kind of the overview of it. Each of the planning commission terms are for three years, but the chair position is a one-year term. We have the election of officers in June. So with that, I will take I guess, a call for, for the chairman. And nominations are open. And then if I could get the nominations, and then once we have that, we'll have each of those nominated. If you want to give a short description of why you'd be interested in being the chair and what your experience is and and that, that type of thing. So with that, I'll take call for motions for the, for the chair.
Nominate Chris Iliff.
One nomination for Chris Iliff. Roger Mason. Any other nominations? Okay, I hear none. No other nominations. So all those in favor for nomination?
Wait a minute.
Sorry, yes, I guess you should. You should, you should have your, your moment to explain why you want to be the chair, sir.
I, I didn't say I wanted to be chair. But I have been chair for a long time. And I hope during my chairmanship that it has been an opportunity on the whole to run orderly meetings and to do the business of the county. Obviously, we've come through a patch of meetings where there's been more controversy than we have been confronted with in a long number of years. And I would express my appreciation for those who have stayed with us on the board and for the conduct of the meetings that have been sometimes contentious. And my hope is that in the next year that while we may or may not confront controversy, that we will always treat all of the people who come before us with civility and so that we can get the best possible outcome. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. Well, with that being said, we'll ask for a vote on the nomination for the chair, Chris Iliff. Or a roll call vote, please.
All right. Mark Huggins.
Yes.
Do I call Chris Iliff? Do I call Chris Iliff?
Yeah, I'll, I'll vote for myself.
Okay, Chris Iliff.
Yes.
George Lund.
Yes.
Roger Mason.
Yes.
Randy Hutchins is not present. Jim Nice. Dave Johns.
Yes.
Lindsey Grissay is not present. Kelly Rast.
Yes.
Mike Levin.
Yes.
Randy Downing.
Yes.
Terry Atwell.
Yes.
Hey, that is ten yeses.
Thank you, Megan. Mr. Chairman, would you like me to continue with the vice chair nominations, or would you like?
If you would.
Okay. Continuing on, we'll have the nominations for vice chair. Our current vice chair is Randy Hutchins. There's no requirement, like in the bylaws, there's no requirement that the vice chair be in attendance for the the meeting when he is nominated. At least there's silent on that. So that being said, that our, our current vice chair is Randy Hutchins. But I'll take nominations from the, from the the commission for the vice chair position.
I'll nominate Kelly Rast.
Oh, no, thank you. Thank you, but no.
Maybe you'll look, you wouldn't make eye contact.
Oh, sorry.
That's an official no.
That's an official no.
Nomination for Roger Mason. Mr. Mason, do you accept the nomination?
I'll honorably accept the nomination, not the election.
Any other nominations for vice chair? Okay. That being said, Mr. Mason, would you like to give a quick overview of your your, why you would accept the position of chair or vice chair and your experience?
Out of a duty obligation, I will accept the position. Thank you.
Okay. So that being said, we'll have a, a roll call vote for the vice chair position.
Mark Huggins.
Yes.
Chris Iliff.
Yes.
George Lund.
Yes.
Roger Mason.
Abstain.
Randy Hutchins not present. Jim Nice. Dave Johns.
Yes.
Lindsey Grissay not present. Kelly Rast.
Yes.
Mike Levin.
Yes.
Randy Downing.
Yes.
And sorry, one fell off. Terry Atwell.
Yes.
That is ten yeses.
Yeah.
I apologize. Nine yeses, one abstain. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, just to point out, one additional officer for the the planning commission is our secretary in accordance with five point oh one, point oh three. And the director shall designate a staff person to serve as secretary for the, for the Johnson County Planning Commission. And that person is Megan Lynch.
Right. And thank you. And Megan, you're doing an excellent job. We appreciate your stepping into this role. And we look forward to your telephone calls verifying our presence every month. Yeah.
As do I.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Well, that takes care of the election of officers. The next item is our upcoming planning priorities. And this is a very important thing that we need to do, both to direct the staff and to focus our own efforts for the balance of the year. And if we cannot complete the agenda that we set for ourselves in this year, it can certainly move on into twenty twenty three. But we need to set priorities here with regard to what we do first. And so I think that we have a document, if you haven't seen it, the June twenty one Planning Commission memo from the staff to us regarding the discussion of upcoming planning priorities kind of lays out both planning staff's opinions and also they have copied and pasted, I think, the recommendations that they have received from members of the planning commission with regard to how we should proceed and, and what our priorities ought to be. I will at this time turn this over to any member of the planning staff to get this conversation rolling.
This is Keller Rast. I do have a concern because one of my number one priorities as a being a board, a member of the zoning board and the commission, there seems to be always a lot of issues regarding grievance policies or what to do. And that is hugely important to protect our citizens. And even as myself, my, I remember my first zoning board meeting, I went in thinking I was probably going to vote no on something, but as we went through it, the applicant made some changes based on our recommendations. The, you know, some of the citizens were kind of like, okay, that's good, but that still doesn't make us so comfortable. What happens if they don't follow through? How do we do this? That has come up numerous times. And I feel like if, if we don't make it a priority, and it shouldn't be that hard. I mean, you're basically talking a policy and procedure to go in the books. Where citizens know where to fill out a grievance. And then there needs to be a procedure of how that's followed. That even me sitting up here and making sort of my recommendations or my votes based on citizens, whether it's yea or nay, same with the zoning board. And then these people relying on us to make sure these applicants follow through from anything simple to little, and yet they're always asking, well, what do we do if they don't? Well, and I've asked you, Jay, this several times, Sean, here. There is no policy, not really. There's not a clear-cut policy. And that, and I think that's, that's a problem because I, I have a problem making a vote saying, this is how it's going to be done. We're going to give this CUP, or we're going to make this recommendation based on these policies. But then if it, nobody follows through, there's nothing. And it gives the citizens no voice. And that's so wrong.
And Ms. Rast, I note in the list that is attached to the memo of June twenty one, your list of four items.
Right, but I don't see it on here.
Yes, it's right in there, under number one. Create a transparent grievance remedy and policy so citizens can feel there is a pathway. So it's.
Is this right here? Is that what you're talking about?
I'm just reading what apparently you wrote.
No, I, no, I know that, but I was, I guess maybe I'm confused. I was going by this as these are our major. This is what y'all are wanting to start off with, and I didn't see that. Yeah, I know what I wrote, and I know where it's on there. I don't see it as something we want to address. Unless I'm missing that.
Well, I hope it is because I have a list of things I want to address, and I intend to get to it.
Okay, then maybe I'm misreading that, but this part I don't see it on here. So
Well.
Maybe I jumped the gun on that, but.
I think so. All right.
Or maybe not.
Mr. Chairman, I, I just, Jay Leipzig, just to address a couple of different things, I will say, Commissioner Rash, your, your comments are well taken. I, I know we've spoken about it. I think you spoke with Sean about it as well. I've looked at our subdivision regulations, and we have very general language, but we don't have anything specific. And so to your point, my, my thought is we, you know, we, we went through the discussion for preparation of the bylaws, the planning commission, working on the bylaws for the zoning board. That is something, yes, we can, we could, obviously, we could do something like that. I think that is needed. I would agree to have a, have a policy that, that we for even, even performance standards, you know, the, the things such as you know, phone calls being returned in twenty-four hours and that type of.
Yeah, there needs to be, Keller Rast, there needs to be accountability. This is something very simple. Almost every company has
Yeah, that.
this type of policy and procedure in place.
That, that type of.
We've heard it in every, whether it's a planning commission, a zoning board, the people saying, well, what do we do if they don't? We don't have an answer for that, and that's inexcusable.
We, we do to some extent through the law, through the, this, this Kansas statutes, but and we have some language in our subdivision regulations, but I agree, it needs to be more detailed. It's not a, it's certainly something that I, I wouldn't say choose your friendly for the public at all. And so it, it should be. I mean, that's
Yeah.
So that, that's something the intention was to, was to begin that process too and have that as part of that. So we're, we're going to talk about that tonight. What my, what our thoughts are is we wanted to go through kind of an overview of staff priorities. And then we have the various planning commissioners' priorities and things they'd like to, to focus on. And then taking that information, putting it together and coming up with a, with a plan. Now, I can't say it's something we complete all in, in twenty twenty-two. I think this is probably a two-year plan, ideally, as we look at everything that needs to be done or some of the items that that, that are being contemplated. But yes, to your point, that's something that's.
Keller Rast, if I take it upon myself to put a form together and submit to you guys for approval or whatever, I mean, I'm willing to do it. This is, this really is not that hard. This would be like a form that citizens can go to, fill out their name, write what it is, and then a policy that they'll get a return phone call in a certain amount of time. I mean, I'm not talking about outline every potential scenario, but just what the citizens can go to. I mean, you've been at the zoning board. I mean, everybody asks that.
And Commissioner, there, there are other departments that have something similar that other planning departments do. So
Everybody does.
Yeah, I, that, that's something that's, that it's, we certainly wouldn't be reinventing the wheel. It's something that's fairly standardized across the industry, variety of industries. So to that, I, I don't have any concern with, with that. I think it, it is something that would be needed and would be helpful because it, it provides a knowing direction for, for staff, but it's more transparent for the public too.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair. Mike Levin, I had a question regarding something, and I apologize, probably should have brought it up earlier. I was looking through these things earlier, and I just refreshed my memory of it. There's one section related to potentially reviewing C, CUPs and accessory buildings specifically. I am in the process of putting one up. I've actually already gotten my county approval. I don't know, Johnson County legal here. Is that something that I need to take myself out of, even though I've already had my approval on that? Because yeah. Okay, okay. Thank you.
You know, Ms. Levin, I'm, I'm going to express an opinion here. It's just an opinion. It would seem to me, if you've been through the process and you have satisfied all the requirements and you have your permit that this is an item not only you should be able to talk about, but are actually knowledgeable about in a way that somebody who's not been that through that process is. So my, my thought is that your, your comments in that area would be very welcome.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just to continue, a couple of additional comments, and Bob Ford beat me to it. I was going to make a couple of preliminary things to, to note. You mentioned earlier about having all of our meetings in a hybrid format that are being videos and, and our, our, on, on Zoom webinar. We also have a YouTube channel that will be all of the planning commission meetings will be put on a channel for YouTube. So I think we've made some major accomplishments there with, between, not only with the planning commission, but also our zoning boards. And so that's a huge step forward for us, I think, in terms of, of transparency, ease of access, kind of understanding the process. So I'm, I'm excited about that. You know, there, we've had some, some little quirks here and there in terms of the technology of getting everything to work properly, but but I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I think that, that definitely is the direction we should go in the future. It is more transparent. It's more participatory for the public. And so I think that's, we're, we're looking forward to doing that. So all of our meetings, Planning Commission, zoning boards, including Board of Zoning Adjustment, all of those meetings will be, will be televised. And so on Zoom, Zoom webinar, as well as being available on, on YouTube. So I was going to make that announcement. And the other part is introduce Bob Ford. Yes, our whatever county counselors and, and Bob is, has been with the county for quite some time. I'm really with Public Works over the years and several different, different departments. Has been our attorney for the contract licensing program. She's, has a wide variety of experience in, in legal matters. So Bob is here this evening. So with his opinion, when, when asked, we also will have an attorney present for our planning commission meetings and our zoning board meetings in the future too, which I think will also help if there are questions or comments, things that, that if we, if, if, you know, we, we as, as questions arise, we'll be able to have that expertise available. So I think that's a huge step forward for us as we as we move forward. So that's my introductory comment on, on this memo for you this evening. But what, what is in, in your packet was a, a series of, of, of goals or our concepts that the planning staff thinks is, is critical as we move forward the next couple of years. And this, this, I might, might add, we started this conversation, I believe, probably in, in it was probably in February, I think, when we first started to have the discussion and talked about having a, a work session and a work workshop or work, kind of working meeting. Well, as we went through the, the spring and the early part of the summer and people's vacation schedules, I just couldn't find a date that would work for everybody that we could get a quorum. So that's why we're doing it tonight. So I apologize. We talked about having a special meeting, even on a Friday afternoon or something, kind of a working meeting for planning staff or the planning commissioner. I just couldn't, couldn't make that work with everyone's schedules. So I'll just briefly go through this, and then if, if you all have questions about that, please, please stop me and I'd be happy to, to, to answer questions. Also, planning staff, feel free to jump in as well, but these are things that, that, that planning staff believes should be a priority as we move forward. Oh. And then also looking at other and, and adding additional things from, from commissioners as we move forward. So one is the planning commissioner training. We had talked about doing that. It's something we historically, prior to the pandemic, we had tried to have a training at least once a year in January or February. And then with the pandemic, we were kind of got, got away from that, but I'd like to get back into that, that schedule again and look at having a, a planning commissioner training and a zoning board training probably later on this summer, either, either late summer, early fall. I think would be very helpful. I noticed even when we went through the, the bylaws discussion with the planning commission, I think there were. I think there were so many very, just, just very good conversation about, about the bylaws and, and aspects of what, what's in those bylaws, that, that training would be highly beneficial on that. So we'd like to incorporate that in, in the near future as well. The other item is to review and update of three plans within our rural comprehensive plan. We have our, our airport compatibility plans for both New Century and Alata Executive, as well as the Sunflower Plan. And so like to focus on those. I, I think those are something we, we, we've, staff has engaged a consultant to help us with our airport compatibility plans. That's a very specialized work of specialized area planning work. So we, we, we've started that process. The Sunflower Army Ammunition Plant is something that, as you're aware, in, in January of this year, the city of De Soto annexed quite a number of acres, about six thousand acres of, of the old former Sunflower Army, Army ammunition plant. So there's about three thousand acres that, that needs to be planned and that plan should be revised. So I think working on that would be a prerogative. We also have review and update of certain regulations regarding residential structure accessory buildings and working on our, our subdivision regulations. There are a lot of things that, that are redundant and those that need to be changed. We, we do have things such as language regarding our, our sign regulations or communications towers, which are not current with, with state laws. We need to make sure that they're, that, that they're current and, and, and relevant and consistent with that. So we, th- those are in need of updating. It's been quite some time since we've done that. So this is kind of a, a major comprehensive process, but that, that certainly is a priority as we move forward. The also looking, you know, we, we, we talked about the, we just went through the amendments for the solar regulation, utility scale solar. We should also think about provisions for other renewable energy resources. So with that being said, that's kind of an overview of the, of the staff memo and the staff concerns as we, as we move forward. There are several other things that, that, that planning commission members also talked about, and my goal tonight, frankly, is as we talk about these and, and review them, and we take this, this list and we assemble it back together, and then we can kind of put together our, our strategic plan here for the next couple of years. Because it, it's, it's a lot of work, but I think it's a chance, especially as we're coming out of the the solar discussions that we've had last year, and coming out of the pandemic, a chance to, to reset in some ways. And so refocus on what, what the issues are before us, because, you know, it's, it's been, we've been focused on solar almost exclusively for over a year. And so it's, it's time to, it's, it's kind of refreshing to get back into these other topics as well. So with that, I'll ask the planning staff, am I missing anything or anything you guys want to mention?
Sean Pendley, planning staff. I, I just mentioned, as Jay noted, a couple of these items that were listed as the, the staff priorities that we're starting off with. The airport compatibility plan updates. That process has already begun. We will be, as Jay mentioned, a contract was approved by the B O C C just last week for our award, a contract to Coffin Associates, so that a consultant will be helping us with that. Those plans, as you may know, are adopted as part of the rural comprehensive plan. So ultimately, the planning commission will also be viewing those and will be a part of that process. So we'll have, we would like to have at least two of the commissioners serving on that advisory committee. Likely, we probably won't start forming those meetings and, and actually getting involved with updates until twenty twenty three, but we are going to start work with the consultant this summer. We expect to have a kickoff meeting with the staff and, and the airport commission this year. And then likely we'll come back before the planning commission, we hope, early twenty twenty three, but that's just one update. And the area plan updates, I think, those are also going to be starting soon. And, and then the amendments to the regulations, it will be ongoing. So that's just the only additional thing I was going to note that we will be asking for committee member, the commission members to serve on subcommittees for these, some of these updates. And then, of course, as Jay mentioned, to some of the individual updates, which we can go through any additional comments from commissioners as other priorities, but we're trying to tackle these in a, in a priority list. We'll have to, as Jay mentioned, I think what we'll have to do is prepare the strategic plan for outlining the priorities for some of these projects that will be coming before the planning commission. But, but some of these know that some of these have started. Staff is working on this. Others will be a little bit later in the process.
This is Commissioner Rasch. I just have a question. If you could kind of clarify how, since the, my only knowledge of working on the planning commission is with solar. I started, unfortunately, at the same time that solar started. But my confusion is, when you go in front of the board, like, I'm not really sure what our role is when we come up here and do research and come up with our own opinions and ideas or data points and present those. But then we're pretty much excluded from the B O C C meeting or the committee of the whole meeting. And then from what I understand and from what happened on both is the county, the, you know, the chair usually asks, well, what is staff's opinion? And then staff gives their recommendations. I'm trying to figure out why we spend so much time bringing up our opinions or our views if they might be different than yours, because we don't have a seat at that table to represent why we said stuff. I mean, I know you probably gave them our written stuff they asked for, which I doubt most of them read. But we, you know, there were some very black and white facts that not only citizens brought up, or in my opinion, that I brought up, like, in my opinion, honestly, this picture you guys keep presenting is a huge misrepresentation, since this is seventy five acres, not a thousand acres, not two thousand acres. And I watched, and I could go through there several times and point out point blank comments that could have been, or, you know, that y'all could have represented some of the things that were set up here, but they're not. Like, so I mean, basically, once the conversation got started, a lot of the things that, you know, we changed that were the hot topic buttons, I mean, not, obviously, the other stuff we were all on the same boat with, but the hot topic ones that took forever. We don't have a voice, so I'm not really sure what the point was to go through all this. And honestly, I'm trying to figure out what's the point to put citizens through this? I mean, we don't have a seat at the table. And I mean, in all honesty, in my opinion, you didn't represent us. You just, which, if that's the way it works, then I will accept that. But I don't really see the point of the time and effort that goes into this.
Chris Ilove, Chairman. Yeah, that's the way it works.
Yeah.
These people are not our employees. They do not report to us. They are responsible to the Board of County Commissioners, not to the planning commission. They advise us, and we give them our advice in return. Now, I've served on both zoning boards and planning commissions almost forty years, cumulatively fifty years. And I have had a number of times when people didn't agree with my opinion, if you can believe that. Where the.
I'm not talking about agreeing. I'm talking about presenting facts.
County Commissioners, after hearing the opinion of the zoning board or the opinion of the planning commission, took a different tack. These are elected officials. They are responsible directly to the public as we are not. And.
That's my whole point. They're not listening to the public. The citizens have no voice. Ninety percent of the.
All the citizens of this county had plenty of opportunity and gave lots of advice to the Board of County Commissioners. If the Board of County Commissioners didn't agree with some of the people that came forward, that's their job. And to whine about it is.
Excuse me.
Is, I'm sorry, but that's just.
Dave Johns, I, I didn't.
That is, that is out of line. That is out of line. And I will.
I did not vote that. I, I did not see that as whining. I see those.
I'm asking a solid question. We spent a lot of time. I spent hours researching stuff. I went and visited solar farms. I was in Texas this weekend and went and looked at one. I'm just trying to, going forward, I want to know if I'm not, I don't need to waste any of my time. I don't need to waste time researching. I don't need to waste spending three hours out in West Gardner, going through West Johnson County and looking at the watershed, educating myself. I mean, that's what I'm asking. I'll happen, if, if this is how it works, it's just rubber stamp everything. I, just let me know now, because I'm not going to take my time away from family, friends, other things. If this is how it works. I was just asking, why don't we have more of a voice when it comes to it? Since we're the ones supposedly up here discussing all this. That's not whining. And I'm going to say right now, I'm putting you on notice, and I'm going to put it on an official notice and write something up now. This is the third time you have been inappropriately very rude to me. And it has been documented by other people, and I'm, would like to make an official stand at that now. That is not whining. It was a question to understand what are, what are places here.
I, I, I'm sorry, when you say you don't have a voice, what have you just been doing? What were you doing during all?
I said a voice at the time.
Oh, you mean you didn't win? You didn't get what you wanted?
Oh, my God. All right, I got.
Mr. Chairman.
That is not what I said. I said a voice at the time in front of the B O C C, when the B O C C asked specific questions to the staff. We didn't have a voice because they answered based on what they recommended. That is, that's the key. The, it's details.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Jim Neese. I think, I think what happens, and it is the system, okay? And I've been on the zoning board a little longer than you, sir. Is that when the zoning board comes up, and we have to give reasons, okay? And we have to give reasons to go to the county commissioners. And the county commissioners hear the reasons and the, and the report from the staff. If the staff differs from us, it's like it's a competitive situation. It's like you're a lawyer, and it's like you're competition giving the argument in front of the jury, and you don't get any input. It's a system the way it is. I think it needs to be improved. I'm not sure how. Because it, it's by nature that the staff is going to sell their recommendation. And in effect, they become weightier, more weightier than the people at the zoning board. I'll use the zoning board, for example. Okay, and it's happened many times, and it just so happens we had a situation that was volatile. And so I don't know. I don't disagree with you. It is a system, but I think it needs to be somewhat improved. And I don't know how you do it, because these folks, if they have a situation, zoning board, that they disagree with the zoning board, and then they present it to the county commissioners in two or three minutes, it's natural for them to present their interest in the deal more so than, than the zoning board. And I, it's reality. Oh. And I don't know, even when the zoning board, for example, votes for a, a situation that's contrary with what, you know, the staff recommends. And I, I think it's an issue. It's a problem. It's real. And I don't know how, Jay and I, we've talked about this before. You know, if I would have made that presentation or any presentation as a staff member, and it's different than what the zoning board or the planning, or the planning commission's recommendation or the minority recommendation. I would present it, you know, it's not, it's not totally, fair is a hard word. It's just a natural way it's set up. And I don't know that you can overcome it, because the staff, in effect, makes a presentation to the county commissioners.
Mr. Kelly, and that's exactly what I'm saying. I mean, if this is the way it works, if this is the system, and if staff is going to have a different opinion, I just want to know, and then I'll just throw in the towel and be like, I'm not wasting my time, because obviously it doesn't matter. So I just kind of want to know how this works, so.
Mr. Chairman, Sean Pendley, planning staff. I, this is great conversation. This is a classic debate. This is something that I've been familiar with for a long time, working for twenty years at the city, working with the planning commission, then on the city council, similar process. Now learning with the county, same process, different, different entities that serve the planning commission, zoning boards, and, and Board of County Commissioners. Staff always presents whatever recommendations, and this is outlined in, in our zoning and subdivision regulations. Staff always presents the ultimate recommendation from planning commission and zoning boards and B Z A. Well, those are decisions are final, but for planning commission and zoning boards, always we will present what the final recommendation was from those recommending bodies, in this case, the planning commission. Of course, the Board of County Commissioners, when they're making their final decision, they will look at both that resolution, that resolution that's presented. We always present to the Board of County Commissioners the recommendation from the recommending body, the planning commissioner or zoning boards. Oftentimes, we're, maybe the zoning board or planning commission don't follow staff's recommendations. They can come up with their own recommendations. But what we always present to the board is that recommendation from the planning mission. We are often asked, of course, when we go to the hearing, the final hearing, what is staff's opinion? And we have to present that side of it too. Then, of course, the board has their decision as to how they want to vote on the matter. But always, staff will present those findings and conclusions from zoning boards and planning commission. I just wanted to add that, because I understand that that's, oftentimes, it's felt maybe some of the individual commissioners feel that they're not, their voice isn't heard. We absolutely do present that. It may not seem that way when we're asking questions as staff, but we absolutely do take into consideration all the comments that we get, planning commission, zoning board. And they're often presented in the form of a resolution. Those are not staff resolutions. Those are resolutions that were recommended by the planning commissioner and zoning boards. I just wanted to make that comment, just so.
Jim Neese. And all due respect, sir. That when that presentation is made, okay? And I'm not just talking about the solar situation. There's other situations we've talked about. You can present something a hundred percent of something or forty percent of something. And maybe the sixty percentage you don't represent is the important part of the reason why a zoning board or here was in opposition to your recommendation. Nobody's denying that you don't do that. Okay? But if I was making a recommendation for you in front of the county commissioners in some situation, my argument would have been a hundred and ten percent different. Not that you didn't give one, or not that the staff, not, let's don't talk about solar, let's just talk about in general. So you don't, I, from our, from my personal perspective, you don't even recognize that in certain presentations that you make on behalf of the Northwest Zoning Board, it's different than you. You do not recognize that your presentation may be more potent on the staff recommendation as opposed to those to, that the zoning board. And the only thing that I would ask is, is in the future, be more cognizant of the reasons. Why do we give reasons? Of the reasons why the zoning board, or maybe this body here has different views than what you are than what you, than what you have. That's the only thing, that's the only way it's going to, you can talk about this for hours, but that's the only way it's going to be, be improved. And the system is what it is. So all I'm saying, and I'll agree with her, is that we have to improve that, not only for this body, but also for the zoning boards, because it happens with the zoning boards too. It doesn't happen as frequently, or it's not as important as some what we just went through. So that's what, that's what I would just ask of staff.
Mr. Chairman, or Commissioner Jay Leipzig, just to kind of, I, I, I agree with everything has been said. Everything's been said. I, I think, I don't have anything to add to what Sean's additional comment. That is the process, you know, planning staff is, is professionals. We make a recommendation of whatever the item is, and it's unfortunate, because it doesn't happen very often that we're, that we have disagreement, disagreement in terms of recommendations. I think, you know, we just went through the fairly contentious process with, with solar. It was, it was a long, long road. That, that's kind of a, a, kind of an outlier. I think a more typical thing would be what happens with the zoning board. And the, we do have to present the, the reasons of why the zoning board made the recommendation, whatever it was, the staff will provide their recommendations. Most of the time, we are in agreement on things. This was, I mean, it's it, to say it's, you know, it's, 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 it's the process. It is the process. And there may be some things we could do in terms of tweaking the, the staff reports and how that is presented. But I think, you know, this body is, is a recommending body. And this, it's true, you know, in these type of cases all over the country with, with things, it's, it's, it's fairly, fairly common. And it's just, just the way that the process works for things. But, you know, I, I certainly, your points are, are well taken. I understand what, what you're saying in terms of making the recommend, that's, that's why I take that. The work that we do is so. I, I guess. uh, the work that we do is so, uh, uh, I, I guess worthy. Cause I, I do think about how can we portray this item in a, in a factual, accurate manner. And I think, um, you know, that's, that's very, very important. It's important that we're transparent with the public, uh, transparent with you all. So that there's, uh, uh, and, and that we, we bring out the best information we, we have uh, when it is available. Um, and that's not, not perfect by any means, but I think most of the time we, we hit that, we hit that mark. Um, but to that point, you know, we could, we could look at kind of tweaking things a little bit when the, in terms of the presentation. Um, a lot of it depends on, you know, and I've worked for several jurisdictions in the past, so it's in every, every place it's similar type of problems with this type of, this, this issue, type of issue is very common. Doesn't really help anything, I know.
Commissioner Rass, no, what would help me is if you guys have a different opinion and that's the opinion you're gonna give at the B O C, just let us know upfront and then we won't waste our time trying to, you know, give our point of view and we'll just go with what you guys say.
Mr. Chairman.
It's kind of what I would go with.
Mark Huggins. I don't think I can bring any resolution here, but I do have a theory about how things are intended to work. And I think every city I'm familiar with in Johnson County and the county are intended to be administered by professionals. Uh, not by politicians, not by zoning boards, not by planning commissions. That's the system we have and at different times I've kind of thought maybe it'd be better if you had, if you could find the best person in the county to run things, it would be a whole lot better.
Just where, where do the citizens come into play? Where, where's their voice? Where, where do they come into play with all this?
Well, that's a good question.
I thought that's.
And, and that's, I think that's more the old way of running a city is where you had a council and a mayor and the mayor kind of ran things. And I don't know exactly why everybody went away from that system, but we have. And, and it's universal. And that's the system we have. I don't, like I say, I don't know if this makes anybody feel any better or not, but but that is the system. And, and I think, uh, it's ran, the planning is ran by the planning staff. Public works is ran by the engineer, you know, the engineering is run by the, and the city manager is the one that's in charge of these folks or the county manager. Uh, and even though the board of county commissioners can hire and fire the county manager. And I might be wrong here, but I don't think they have any right to hire or fire anybody else.
I understand, I totally understand the system and everything you're saying, but I'm trying to understand, well, why are we doing this? Why are all of us wasting our time? Why do we have citizens come up and speak and, I mean, like, why are we just all wasting our time if it's just? I mean, base, I, I hear what you're saying that this is the system. So let's just maybe get through all of our work real quick and just rubber stamp everything like.
Well, I think this gives us an opportunity to the citizens to have people on this board who can offer opinions and can study and can try and work on it and, and have a persuasive argument for things. But it's not our decision.
I, I.
What, what we decide is right or wrong is not really our, you know, it's not what determines what happens.
I, yeah, I, and I totally understood that. I knew that from the get go. I just thought our voices were represented a little bit better. At the next level, I didn't realize it just got put to the side of staff. So again, I totally, my apologies. I didn't really understand how this whole process worked until I watched it in motion go through. It was just disappointing not to hear all of the great things that were set up here that we all voted on to keep. And some unanimous votes are almost, you know, seven to one votes and all of that disappeared at the time when it was at the table. That's all. I got it now, so I just won't put a lot of time and effort into figuring out a lot of this stuff anymore is all.
Let's move on. I'm, Jim, Mr. Chairman, I've got a question. Uh, totally a different subject. Would you explain to me the current, uh, when I read this about the, uh, residential and rural parcels, less than 10 acres and so on, you, I've read this a couple of times and I'm not sure I understand. I'm not understanding what that. Mr. Neese, where are you on the, uh, on page three, under note, low background?
Mr. Neese, uh, Jay Leipzig, Karen Miller is gonna answer your question for you.
This is Karen Miller. So this is, um, addressing how the requirement for a conditional use permit for an oversized accessory building is determined.
Yeah.
So that's a summary of our zoning regulations. So, so, um, if you have more than 10 acres, 10 acres or more, um, that the area of your accessory buildings is not regulated.
What, not regular?
Not regulated. So we have a formula if you have less than 10 acres. That if, if you meet the formula, then you do not have to get an oversized, a C U P for oversized accessory building.
I understand. Okay. That, that clarifies that for me. I've read that three or four.
I just thought people might wonder, well, when do I need to get a C U P for an oversized accessory building? So I just thought I'd summarize the regulations.
Thank you. Mr. Leipzig, I don't know if you have a suggestion with regard to how we plow through this memorandum from, uh, June 21. There is, I know some overlap and some duplication, both from, uh, the staff and from planning commissioners who have, um, made some suggestions. Um, you know, I, I know, for example, Ms. Rass's concern with regard to, um, the, uh, uh, ability to make complaints uh, or, or concerns, uh, of citizens to the, uh, planning department not being acted on as well, but I think that that's found as well, both within your remarks and, and other places. And it might be as, as good a place to start as any because it seems like th- there really could be a fairly quick resolution to that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I agree. I think, you know, that, that's, that's a good place to start. I think there, there is a lot of overlap and, and many of these things are, are found in our, um, either subdivision regulations. Um, or, um, the importance of, for example, the conference of plan and the, and the concepts are involved in that. Um, I think it can also be elaborated on. Uh, I think the Commissioner Rass, a comment about having a uh, clearly defined, uh, policy and procedures or standard operating procedures for, for a variety of issues. And we have that in other areas of the county and I, and I think, um, and, and we do in planning as well, but, but to have it publicly available for the, for, um, um, for the residents to, to, to look at it where it's just very clear and, and not buried in a, in a subdivision regulations document, I think is important. So, yeah, I, I think, I, I guess what I would propose, we can take these things and, and, um, and put together. Take what, what is here now and, and refine it and, and put together a, a work plan. I don't think this is anything that we could do in the next six months. I think we're probably, you know, I, I know even the airport competitive compatibility plans is about a 12 to 15 month process. So we're probably talking uh, really about at least a year and a half to a two-year, uh, priority list for, for projects.
You're, you're talking about the entire.
Um, that, just, just my thoughts, I, um, in terms of putting some of these, some of these things together, but refining it and putting, putting it together into a work plan.
I, I mean, I, I just gave an example. On Friday I made a telephone call uh, to the planning department with regard to a road cut that was being made into a county road. And it did not appear to be done according to the, the system that is set out for making those kinds of cuts. Um, I heard back on Monday, um, an inspector had gone out, determined that a permit had not been given. Uh, went and talked with the landowner, uh, got the process started and the permit, permitting process got underway. It was completed, I think by the end of the day and they were in compliance by the end of the day with county regulations. Well, I just felt like that was super service. Um, and, and it, it really made me feel like as a citizen that my concerns about the safety of the county and the permitting process being complied with was being listened to. And I made it with a telephone call. And maybe it's because I was chairman of the planning commission that I got a little quicker response than, uh, the average citizen. But the same sort of thing, it seems to me could be done either through a telephonic communication or with an online application where you simply put down, I'm concerned about something that's going on at 175th and Neiman Road, you know, can you tell me if that's been permitted properly?
Mr. Chairman, we do have those type of capabilities for, uh, uh, for complaint trackers, that type of thing where the applicant can, can log in and find out the status of whatever it is, um, uh, where the, the status of their complaint. Uh, we have that, that same feature in, in building permits. Uh, you can, you can log into the portal and find out the status of your, of your plan review, for example. Uh, whatever that, that might be. So, um, yeah, and this, in, in today's, the day and age and technology that we have now. Uh, that, that type of anything that we can do in that regard in terms of transparency and being able to be responsive so the public knows kind of the status of whatever the, the issue might be.
You know, and if in doubt, call a planner. We always have a, a planner designated to return phone calls. Um, and it, you know, we've operated that way for, for decades. We've really very seldomly until just the solar stuff had even complaints about our transparency. And you know, it's, it's seems like there's been a combative situation that's arisen. But really just if in doubt, call a planner. If you as planning commissioners have questions about what we're doing or a particular, um, application or item, just call us and we can give you the background and explain it. And, um, that really is, is worked for us for a couple of decades.
Jim Neese, I got a quick question. Uh, I kind of had the opposite of what you had. Maybe it was because I wasn't the chairman, but, uh, I, I had a call from a neighbor, obvious code violation. And I called it and I talked to the gentleman. Not on him at all, apparently it, do we, he said he was a part-time and it was a time. It was like, I had to go take the pictures and I had to do this, that and another and, and I'm not faulting that person at all, but, uh, that's happened a couple of times. So for code violations, do we have a, well, I mean, I hate to call one of you to tell, tell me somebody's got 15 house trailers parked in their yard, you know? Then I'm supposed to call the code person. So are we short in that particular case?
We, Commissioner, we, we do have a part-time code officer, uh, for the county. That's for all the, yeah, unincorporated area. Uh, however, uh, many of the, you know, if Karen said, if you, um, uh, certainly feel free to call the planning staff. We can make, you know, the planners, we all, other work is assigned. Um, the, the code officer is the, by the, the primary person that gets out there and looks at those things, but pan, planners are involved in that type of activity as well.
This Commissioner asked, so honestly, almost every zoning board meeting, a, a citizen asks that question. What do we do if applicant doesn't follow? What's the, what's our grievance remedy? Wouldn't it put all these citizens, like ease their anxiety if we said, hey, there is a form that you just fill out and someone will be in touch in 24 hours, 24 to 48 business hours. Why is that so hard just to put that? And then, and then that's a simple answer or unless, or from now on, our answer is gonna be just call the planning. You want us to tell them?
I'm saying, Commissioner, that we, we have that type of, uh, process where people can call in and make complaints and we'll go check them out. Um, I think the, um, um, and that's, we have a fairly standardized process in that regard. So.
Why isn't ever explained at zoning board meetings when people ask?
We, um, well, I, I was at a couple of meetings explaining it. Um, I can't remember. I don't believe it was southeast though, uh, but I, I know that that's something we've, we, we've talked about. But I, I think, and that, that's a simple solution. That is something. I agree. It's, it could be just a simple.
Help on both ends.
Even a portal that, that the public can log into, uh, to, to log those complaints and it goes to similar what we have for even you know, and I'm, I'm thinking just whether, whether, uh, the webpage that we have for solar, for example. Something like that complaint could be put on and that's, and that's read by the planner on duty or the code enforcement officer or whatever that would see that immediately. And so, and we have that techni, that type of technology and that's an easy fix.
Let, let me make a recommendation to put this issue to rest, uh, before our next planning commission meeting. Why don't we develop a standardized, uh, recommendation or paper that could be distributed to the zoning boards and would be available at every zoning board meeting? That just simply says, you know, grievance process in the event that you feel that a conditional use permit uh, limitation is not being complied with or something like that. It would tell them where you go on the website, what telephone number you call, uh, and, and that sort of thing. And that um, uh, that way, because, you know, one person may show up at one zoning board meeting and not be there for another two years. And so they don't feel like they have heard that explanation. But if there's a, a printout that's available at every zoning board meeting, uh, then, uh, that would remedy that problem. So why don't we just, it, it, because I, I, I do think failure to enforce uh, limitations on conditional use permits and other, uh, uh, clear violations of our zoning and subdivision regulations, uh, is something that, uh, you know, that the, the county can deal with uh, efficiently, uh, but people need to know where and how to do that.
Mr. Chair, this is Mike Levin. Could that form also just be like in a PDF version, put on the website?
Oh, absolutely.
That way you just, if you're not at the meeting, you just.
Yeah.
I like the idea.
Yeah. Okay.
That's, uh, Chairman and members of the commission, that's kind of what I'm thinking too. It's something that could be just a standardized form. That, a writable PDF that you just put that information in.
All right. I don't know if we ought to just continue on down the line with regard to the, um, uh, what's in the June 21 memo. I, I would say this, I would, on behalf of us, with regard to planning commission training. Uh, I think that's just a yes from all of us. Um, set, set a date and a time and make an agenda and, uh, maybe ask, uh, some of the planning or, or ask us what we would like to be on the agenda. You know, a brief presentation on open meetings law is always appreciated, uh, but also, you know, uh, recent trends, uh, recent court cases, uh, statutory changes. Uh, all of that sort of thing is something that we all could benefit from. And, uh, it needs to be on, on an annual basis. And I think that it hasn't been done recently. Primarily because of COVID and the difficulty of having these kinds of meetings, but that time I hope at least is passed.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Chair, it's Mike Levin again. Also, I would be interested. I'd be happy to, to pay for it if there are like webinars, being a newer member of the commission that their staff thinks we could benefit from. I mean, it's something I could sit at home in the evening if it's a pre-recorded one and just sit and watch. That would be, uh, I'd be interested in something like that as well.
Uh, Commissioner Levin, I, I will say the, uh, Mid-America Regional Council has several, uh, training opportunities like that, training events they've had. They had one, uh, uh, just recently, a couple of months ago, but I believe it focused on housing. It's a little, little bit different. But they, um, pre-pandemic, they had, um, uh, several of those throughout the year. I think they had a couple of times a year, at least biannually. Uh, and so I, I know they want to start that schedule again, so we'll certainly let you all know about that too. A variety of, of different topics.
Chairman, Megan Lynch, Secretary, I wanted to announce for the record that Lindsay Grisay has arrived.
Okay, welcome. All right. Um, there are two, um, plans that are part of our zoning and subdivision regulations that you mentioned, the, the new Century Executive Airport compatibility plan and the Sunflower Army ammunition plant conceptual land use. I was just sharing something today with regard to a, uh, plan for the Sunflower Army ammunition plant. Let me, but let me ask you this. Has De Soto annexed the Army ammunition plant at this point?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, they, they did. They, they annexed, I believe it was January the 11th, about 6,000 acres.
Out of a total of what?
Ninety-five hundred roughly.
Okay. All right. So that's, that still leaves a substantial amount in. All right. So that's, that still leaves a substantial amount in the unincorporated area to work on for planning.
Mr. Chairman, I just looked at that. They came down to one hundred and twenty-seventh street.
Okay.
That puts it in perspective for me. I don't know if it helps, but, you know.
All right. Yeah. I, 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 again, I'm, I'm going to kind of push this back on to staff with regard to your opinions with regard to the most important things. I think, you know, one of the, the issues, the complaint issue, we, I think have effectively given you direction on tonight so that that, uh, should, should be resolved. And I will tell you, there's something that, uh, Mr. Hutchins and I both touched on, but using different language. Uh, and that is, we would like to have a sit down with, um, Brian Peating and his staff with regard to whether there is something short of, um, our current road improvement plan that would be very beneficial to the unincorporated area, but at the same time not bankrupt uh, the, uh, the, the county's roads, um, uh, budget. Uh, and, you know, as I drive around, I, I see all different kinds of grades of roads in different places, both in Johnson County and Miami County and rural areas and that sort of thing. And, uh, when Johnson County does it, it does it right, but it does it uh, in, in a way that i- is not cutting corners. Let's, let's put it that way. And I, I think somehow that we might find a happy medium for people in the unincorporated area who are dealing with shoulderless gravel roads. Um, and, uh, uh, we, we might be able to do a kind of a, I wouldn't call it a mini car nut plan, but some kind of a plan where we, we look at roads and instead of budgeting, uh, you know, a half million dollars for a mile, uh, we, we budget, you know, fifty thousand dollars for a mile. And at the same time, uh, get a usable, uh, non-dust creating road that has, uh, moderate shoulders that are, are safe driving. So I, I, that, that, that goes up high on my list. Uh, and, and I know it would be for Mr. Hutchins and Well, Well, who feels very strongly that the unincorporated area does not have adequate representation at the Board of County Commissioners level.
Mr. Chairman Jim Nice, uh, I'd like to know how they, when they set their budgets, because I can remember the discussion when he came in one time and somebody asked the questions, why don't I have the, at least my gra, my mile in front of my farm, chip and seal? And the comment was, it costs, this was several years ago, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to chip and seal an existing gravel road for one mile. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to asphalt it. So my, I guess part of this is for us to understand with that, in that meeting is like, how much money are they going to budget? Because there are, I think, four hundred and some miles of unpaved road in the county. And, uh, you know, how are they going to budget that?
That's, I, I think, yeah, so, uh, I, I guess in generic terms, invite Mr. Peating and his staff in and have them give a presentation and open that up to questions from members of the, uh, Planning Commission.
Yes, Chairman, uh, Jay, I'd be happy to do that. I think, uh, uh, I don't know if the, if the August agenda would be available, but we, we'll look at that and try to get something scheduled, uh, before this body. Um, and that's another thing, uh, pre-pandemic, we occasionally would have updates from, uh, Public Works. Also, uh, Johnson County wastewater would make a presentation on an annual basis. I think we had a presentation from the Parks Department, um, as well. So all of those things we could, we could kind of rotate in throughout the year. But, but yeah, we certainly can get something like that set up and have, um, Mr. Peating, Peating and Public Works staff make a presentation.
This is Commissioner Rass, and I believe he just briefed Commissioner Allen Brand on quite a bit about the roads and potential situations and different things going on according to the agenda that they had this past week.
Hey, Ter, Terry Atwell, um, Chairman, Randy and I both spent about nine months on a gravel road task force a year or so ago. And, um, it, it was very interesting. Um, but Randy and I, to one of our meetings, brought in, uh, the Vance Brothers. You know, chip and seal is their business. And if we're going to talk about allocating money with Brian, eh, maybe we can also bring in an outside like the Vance Brothers. Um, I say to give a second opinion because things were vastly, uh, different. And Randy and I both left that nine months worth of gravel road task force feeling like we wasted our time doing that. Because what Vance Brothers were saying and what Brian Peating was saying really clashed with, um, one another. And I know we, this goes back to the county doing things above and beyond. Instead of just coming in and chip and sealing, for instance, the existing road, they want to redo, you know, everything. So I think there could be a happy medium if that could be worked out.
I'm, I'm in agreement with that sentiment. I, I live on a chip seal road, so. And, and, yeah, and it's, it's, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Jay Leipzig, we'll, we'll come up with a schedule for that, for those type of meetings. And, uh, uh, just to get some immediate feedback from the, from the planning commission, how do you all feel about having an update from the Parks Department? Uh, the Parks Recreation District and then Johnson County wastewater? Would you find that interesting or would you like to have an update from them as well?
Well, I mean, eh, unless it like directly affects something on this list, I think, uh, minimizing the extra speaker so that we don't spend extra meetings, extra hours would be beneficial for me.
What about, could they send, um, sort of an, Commissioner Rass, like sort of an outline or an agenda of what they're working on in the immediate future? And that way, if we look it over and we have some concerns or questions or would like to know more about what they're doing, um, that way we can at least have a feeling of what they're looking at and what their priorities are.
Speaker. Uh, Jim Nice, I, I, I think that information for the next, I think, two-year plan. I remember last presentation we had, they know exactly where they're going, what they're going to do in their current budget. So we could get that for, by the next meeting.
Yeah, just like.
Or it could be sent to us before then. I mean, that's just, Public Works has got that all laid out.
Yeah, Commissioner Rass, your niece, Jay Leipzig, um, yeah, something like we could, there, there's a variety of options and, and places to get that information. So we put that together, be happy to.
Mr. Chairman, Mark Huggins, I, I think it would be useful to hear from wastewater though. If they have any future plan, any plans to expand the sewerable area in the unincorporated part of the county, we should be nice to know.
Yeah.
Roger Mason, I think while we're creating want lists here, uh, one of my wants would be to understand, uh, although we have no power over it and we have no sway of their decisions, why the, uh, this last fiasco we just ran through where we sent the solar thing up and down and up and down. And we had to give reasons why we voted for how we voted for. And that was substantially changed once it got back up. I'd like to understand what's going on in the commissioners' heads when they make that decision. I don't know what the vehicle is that you get in there and understand that. But it would help us with understanding and not bouncing these things back and forth. If we could get some feedback coming this way as well as sending it that way. Roger Mason, I'll leave that to your discretion, how to get into that cavernous vast knowledge and send some of it back down this way.
Uh, Jay Leipzig, I appreciate the comments because these, these are, uh, let me think about that a little bit, kind of the best avenue, the best way to do that. But I'm sure there are some, some, some methods to.
And then Commissioner Rass, um, I would just, any information that's coming down the pipeline with truck routes coming across east to west. I think we should be informed ASAP, not after things have already taken place. As we know, that's all taking place right now.
Mr. Rast, Jay Leipzig, I, I do know that you alluded the, uh, Brian Peating, Public Works has had, uh, quite a few discussions about that, that topic as well. That's been for the, the Board of County Commissioners. So I think the timeliness of having something from Public Works would be, would be very helpful.
Me, I, I think, Commissioner Rass, I think anytime there is something that is starting to be in the process, thought of, discussed, data points driven, it'd be nice that we're abreast of it immediately as well, so we can at least know what's going on and, uh, yeah.
Hey, Terry Atwell, Jay, um, when we get to this point, I do have, uh, a couple of minor items that, um, I want to bring up to maybe add to the list. Uh, I know they're not majorly important. Um, but they have kind of been issues for multiple years and I think they've been on the list before. I, I think they could be easily, um, you know, handled. It shouldn't take too long.
Before we get to Ms. Atwell's, uh, concerns, it looks to me like on page four um, of the, the memo that you have attempted to summarize the issues that have been presented to you by the, uh, planning commissioners in, in their own separate emails or memoranda to you. And some of these we've discussed already tonight and maybe even made progress towards resolution. But I, I would say that, that these, in addition to, you know, the, the big plans, uh, in New Century Executive Airport, uh, Sunflower Army Ammunition, um, and some of your significant, uh, planning staff commitments, uh, that you've mentioned here. Uh, if, if we could put those all on the agenda and again, some of these are pretty straightforward and simple and can be resolved fairly quickly. I think with regard to the road discussion, that's much more complex and will probably involve, uh, substantial disagreement. Um, and also, uh, budgeting issues that, that we have no authority over. Uh, but I think it, it would be good if, um, you know, the, the people who are planning our roads were to hear what the, what I think the planning commission would probably unanimously agree would be to, to find a compromise with regard to, um, turning gravel roads into chip seal roads and, uh, and improving, uh, substantially uh, the, the lives of people in the, uh, in the unincorporated area.
This is Karen Miller. One thing I would like just to, to, um, touch on is that some of the suggestions might have some conflicts with state statute. So when we look at this and give you feedback, we might also get, give some, some feedback on, you know, how that, how that interplays with either like county policy or state statute or, you know, or perhaps have some kind of difficulty in practicality.
No, I, I certainly think that's correct. If, if we're infringing on areas that are controlled by state statute, we need to know where that is and, and, uh, if there are, might be workarounds. Any other comments or direction to, uh, planning staff with regard to, uh, setting an agenda for the balance of the year and, and moving into twenty twenty-three?
Mr. Chairman, um, just to follow up with Commissioner Atwell had, if you want to voice your concerns, Commissioner, that you, so there were two additional items?
Um, yeah.
Or do you want to just?
I can hurry and add them a, and then we can see, um, so both of these date back, uh, when I was on the planning commission, uh, prior. Regulations, uh, for minor lot line adjustments, Miami County does them. Um, and they can be done administratively. And right now, if you do a minor lot line adjustment, you're required to do a, you know, a preliminary and a final plat. And you're talking tens of thousands of dollars for that. And so, um, Mr. Phelps gave me this little thumb drive with a whole bunch of information on it, how Miami County does it. Um, and I think it'd be a pretty simple, um, thing that we could get done. I know you're with the engineering survey company. I know from Allen Brandon Drews, they get requests all the time for minor lot line adjustments. They swear Miami County, you just, papers are online, you fill them out, you can take them down there and it's done administratively. That would be a big help because I know several issues out in our, um, district that could use a minor lot line adjustment. But, um, because of the expenditure, they're not getting done and we don't want to have, I don't want to cause a, an illegal lot split which, um, you know, is probably going to happen if we don't get this, uh, regulation put through. And then number, the other one is.
Oh, just one second. This is Katelyn Miller. Do you mean, do you mean lot line adjustment, which is moving an existing lot line? Or do you mean, um, a, a minor plat, which would be?
No, a, a minor lot line adjustment. So if there were two properties, um, and there, somebody needed to give up a little bit of property, here's the, the example. We have a neighbor that has a pond. The pond sits on two properties. It wasn't an issue back thirty years ago because the person owned both lots. They sold the house, they built on the new four and a half, four point seven five acres. And now there's an issue because that pond is on both properties. And for liability purposes, it needs to go to just the one landowner. So it's like less than a tenth of an acre, but they were going to be required to do a preliminary and a final plat instead of just a little minor lot line adjustment. So, um, and then I'll just give you the, the other example. It's across from Mr. John's, his house, the old cemetery that we're redoing. Um, it is a Kansas and National Historical Site now. We, uh, had it surveyed. One of the little graves was not even on the cemetery property. I'm not about to move the headstone. And then we were, there were graves on the east side that were questionable. So the property owner, the Dieter's Trust traded, we traded property. So we gave them property to the north because there was a half an acre there that there are no graves on. We didn't even exchange so that the graves are actually on the cemetery property. So that's going to be considered an illegal lot split unless we can do a minor lot line adjustment. So nobody lost property, nobody gained property. But nobody wanted these graves off of the, the cemetery property and we certainly didn't want to move them. So those are the two examples. Um, and I know that there are other minor lot line adjustments that could probably easily, easily be done. Um, and I think it would save obviously thousands of dollars, um, to the landowner. So I think it would be something worthwhile to look into if you guys could do that. And then number two, because I live in a community where a lot of us are on four and a half to, you know, under nine acres, the, the, the ag animals. So like right now, if you're under a nominal ten acres, you can't, can't have cattle without a CUP. You can't have sheep or goats without a CUP. And to me, if you're breeding, birthing and butchering, that's agriculture. And then we're stomping on, you know, state statute by making people go get a CUP. by making people go get a CUP. So, I mean, granted, if you have a pet goat, that's not going to qualify. But if you're truly doing ag, then I think we need to step back and not make those individuals do CUPs. So that's
Commissioner Rass, this, just for clarifying, I thought, because I'm in the same way, and my daughter wanted a mini goat or whatever. I thought it had something to do with you can't have a toad animal. A toad, it was, it wasn't so much, you couldn't have a toad animal in Johnson County. Or like the toad hoof, whatever you call it, you know, the split toe, like, not a horse, but they have the
This is Sean, Sean Penley, planning staff.
What I was told.
I'll try to clarify, there are, if it's an agricultural determination or a purpose of use of animals on a property, if it, if there is an agricultural determination, those animals are allowed with an agricultural determination. That is something that staff would have to do. If you're on less than, Karen, three acres, generally, it depends on the type of animal and the quantity of animals. You have a certain percentage, if you're a smaller lot size, than what would be allowed by regulations. You can still have animals for agricultural purposes. We do allow that without a CUP.
This is Commissioner Garcia. Is the question that you want the property to be zoned agricultural for tax purposes? Or are you just saying you want access to be able to have the animals on your property? Okay.
Yeah, we
It's the access without getting a CUP. I mean,
Well, I actually went through this, and I called the planning department, and I was told because a goat is considered a toad, I don't know what the proper word was, but I just remember that. And that's why we couldn't have a goat on our property. We had to have a split hoof. Split hoof. And because we have horses on our property, but that's, we would have to go through a CUP in order to have those little pygmy goats or, I don't know, the ones that Deanna Rose had at the time. I made it through with help going there.
Yes, Sean.
That's what we were told from the planning department.
Yeah, Sean Penley, planning staff, again, yeah, there is a distinction, as Ms. Atwell indicated, if it's for pets or other purposes, for residential purposes, customary, domestic purposes, that may be different. But if it's for agricultural use, that is correct, that those animals are allowed following a determination by staff, those are allowed without CUP. So
And Sean, quick question on that. I remember when we went through this on our little piece of land. What is an agricultural use? Doesn't find a lot of definition within our regulations. Is that intentionally vague? Or is there a need to at some point define what that is? Because I remember we were trying to decide what is, you know, a bona fide agricultural use. And I think for, at least I know that my, for my husband and I, growing up in an agricultural community, that was, you know, we didn't want to, we want to make sure we followed the regulations, but we found that there weren't, there wasn't a lot of detail as to examples or what would qualify. And so we ended up having to call the planning department and have a long conversation to make sure that, you know, we fell within those regulations.
Yes, and well, to me, then you just refer to Kansas agricultural statutes. That's all you have to do. To me, they shouldn't
Kit, this is Karen Miller. The problem is Rick Lynn and I, when we had to deal with agritourism, went through a lot, a lot of this topic. And the Kansas statutes does not define agriculture. So the idea of agriculture has been refined through a series of court cases.
Right.
Which makes it very messy. And so when you call the the planning staff, we can't just give you this this pat answer. We have to look at the context to determine if it's if it's agricultural. For instance, a horse, you know, perhaps it's being used as a pleasure animal, perhaps it's being used to pull a plow. You know, one of those is an agricultural purpose and one is not. And so, you know, right now, we have to ask people, well, what's the context of how you're using these animals? Are they pets? Or are they for agricultural purposes? And so right now, we have to go through a bit of a process to determine this, which it would be great if we could somehow come up with regulations to change that.
Right. Thanks, Karen. Sean Penley, planning staff, I'll just add to that. So this is one of the many items that we have listed as staff as other amendments that are needed in our regulations. We do want to address the animal section and animal uses and agricultural uses more completely. However, that's going to require a whole level of review and update. And that would actually be, this is another thing I was going to mention. These are items that the planning commission, we will absolutely want input on. But I think it's going to involve separate a separate subcommittee on certain updates. That will be one of them. And so that's one of these areas that we'll need to look at. And certainly, it's on the list. I just don't know when it is that we'll be able to get to that as the updates. Certainly, we can add that to our work list. We can discuss that in the strategic plan, when that will fit in and what time.
Jimenez, I've got a quick question, then. How does that conflict with the tax? In other words, if you if you determine something's ag, how does that, does that necessarily come in conflict with the with the taxing authority? If you, if I've got five acres and I've got five goats and you think it's ag, is the taxing authority going to say that's ag, therefore, your four acres are ag and change the tax base?
This is Sean Penley, planning staff. I would say that that we would want to consult with the Appraisers Office on that. I think the way that the appraisals are just based strictly on the primary use, any other incidental uses you have, that may be separate. That's a the Appraisers Office looks at that, I think, by a percentage of land that's in production for whatever use you have. I can't answer the specifics, but I think we would want to consult with the Appraisers Office on that.
Yes, Commissioner Rass, Jay Leipzig, I just would concur. I think that's something to get some clear guidance from the Appraisers Office.
Other comments or suggestions, thoughts for the planning staff with regard to prioritizing topics for the rest of the year? If not, we will turn on to the next item on the agenda, which is the updates and other business.
Chairman, Jay Leipzig, just real briefly, in your in your packet was the summary of the cases brought before the zoning boards and then the Board of County Commissioners. Any questions about that? Please, please feel free to ask me. Also, as an update, we just talked about earlier, the on June sixth, the county commission did did adopt the the regulations regarding the solar provisions and our and our comprehensive plan and our subdivision regulations. We, that really concludes the updates. We will take, just because as a follow up, we'll take this discussion tonight, which I appreciate the feedback and the comments. And kind of refine this this strategic plan as we and put that together and have that available for you at our next meeting. Here has somebody from wastewater talking in July. Okay, Mr. Chairman, also in our July meeting, we will have a representative from the the update for the solid waste management plan, you know, annual update and presentation with the planning commission at our next meeting.
Oh, I apologize. Commissioner Garcia, I, I, I think there's a lot of concern. I'm starting to see that there's a lot of concern similar to the early rumblings in the solar farm about this 199th Street potential trucking route. And I guess I'm curious, maybe could you give us some feedback on where decisions like that are being made? Do we need to get out ahead of it? Is this something that the planning commission should be considering regulations on that would help guide that process? I mean, is that even in our jurisdiction, in your opinion? Like, it's just when people come and talk with me, that that's kind of the new thing. And I feel like, you know, kind of like Commissioner Rass mentioned earlier, the sooner we can get out ahead of it, you know, to put the the tires to the road, I think, would be a little bit better. And I'm not sure if that's something where, if that's a thing that would be under the jurisdiction or purview of the planning commission or a regulation may help, kind of like the solar, how drafting regulations will help guide future applications or decisions on that, is that something we should be doing right now?
Commissioner Garcia, Jay Leipzig, that item currently is, there's been a lot of discussion about that between our public work staff and primarily with the Board of County Commissioners. And so those discussions are continuing. Matter of fact, I believe there's a meeting even this evening about it for further discussion. So I don't, in my opinion, I don't believe that planning commission really has a, has a a role or responsibility in that. This, the discussion really has been more about establishing truck routes and and speed limits through the county and 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 road improvements, which are more public works type items. I certainly think it's something to get an update from Public Works on that. But I, it, there has been a lot of discussion directly with the Board of County Commissioners on it, too.
Commissioner Rass, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that car nap that was passed in 1999, I believe by the OCC prohibited the truck route. So as of right now, it's not allowed. But if it gets, that gets overturned, then it's opening the door, window, whatever you want to say, for this all to be on the table at a full scale. So that's where it sits right now. I know there was a motion for, basically for the car nap to hold, and it was tabled. So a vote did not take place. So it is being discussed. It would just be nice to know, like, who's generating this? And what are the data points to prove? Or to even say it's necessary, this is a necessary topic discussion. And it'd just be nice to get those data points upfront of why this is even possibly going on.
Okay.
Where it originates from. Thank you.
Roger Mason here. I think from an old guy that's been around there a while, we would be wasting a lot of our time even considering getting involved in the road. And the reason I'm saying that is back about the time you're talking about in 99, there were some terms thrown around like the K7 Quarter Study and that paralyzed development from Leavenworth to through Olathe on the west side. And about that same time, there was a lot of talk about the 21st Century Parkway, which is a revival that we're hearing now, all of which is way above our pay grade.
Yeah, I'm, Commissioner, I'm not wanting to get involved right now. I just want to be informed, keep us informed, which shouldn't take more than a five-minute report if there is something going on. And I think it is going on. It's on social forums. It is, there are meetings being done. So just so that we know what's going on. And when citizens ask us, we can tell them, you know, go to the B OCC meeting Thursday morning at 9:30, speak, you know. Yeah, well, and that's what I do. But it'd be nice to have, and, you know, a knowledgeable answer of this is what's going on right now with it. I would have been there last Thursday if I was in town, I can assure you.
All right. Any other items? We have a motion to adjourn. They moved second, moved in second on favor. We're adjourned.